If somebody gives us a building permit, a big chunk of that money goes to the building inspector. We don't pocket it, okay? So typically what we used to do is we would wait until March. So in March, you're at the six-month mark. At that point, all of the transitory stuff is over. The tax monies come in, you paid the bond payments. In March, you've already got the Christmas sales tax. Sales tax goes up a lot in March because we get Christmas. There's a lag. The state has a two-month lag. So by the end of March, you're in cruise mode. For the rest of the year, nothing's gonna happen. You're just in basic autopilot. There's no, no big events, nothing's gonna happen. So typically in March, that's when we look at the budget. And we say, do we need to make a budget amendment? We're halfway through the year. All the weirdness is done. We've collected all of our taxes by now. We've got ninety-five percent of our franchise fees. We've paid our insurance, we've paid, you know, the bond payments. We've paid two of the fire DMS bills. We pretty much have got everything out of the way to see where we're at. It's very predictable from March on. Because there isn't any weirdness. There's no unique stuff to it. The only thing that happens is in July. Reason why July's a little more negative is we make an interest payment on our debt. It's about a ten thousand dollar payment.
So you could pay the principal in February and interest in July?
Correct.
On bond payment?
Correct. And that's universal because we get our tax money in December, January. So all the creditors, when you make your principal payment, everybody has to do it in February. Before you blow the money. You gotta pay the creditors first, when you're rich with the tax money. Okay? And then you deficit spend the rest of the year. That's the way that it works. So one of the problems that you get into is if I give you the October numbers, say, here's the October year-to-date. It tells you nothing about the winter. Absolutely nothing. Okay? It doesn't tell you anything. And every budget line, it's gonna be under budget. I did it. All one hundred and fifty-two lines, our older budget. Because it's only one month. So most times when you do budget, what we've always done in this town is that the six-month mark, we're gonna be under budget still on a lot of things, but we can see where we're at. Okay? We're not gonna have twelve months of limited salary by March. But by March, we'll see is the sales tax running ahead schedule. Can we move a little money into the parks, let's say? That's typically what we used to do in other years. When the money ran higher, we would bump the money into parks. Because parks got the short end of the stick when we did, the roads came down. But that's where we really get to figure out for the first time where we're at. It's about in March. We're in steady state there. We can really figure out where we're at. Now on the utility side. The utility side, it's an interesting thing. When we look at, it's the perfect opposite. It's the mirror image of the city. They run opposites. In the sewer system, you see in October, you see December, I'm sorry, November, December, January, big negative numbers. Big negatives at the beginning of the year for the sewer plant. That's because we do all the CapEx. We do all of the work on the sewer system in the winter. The water and sewer plant, we work on it, we put in the pumps, we redo the wells. We do all of that in the winter. In case we break something. In case somebody does a backhoe and bumps into the ground storage tank. Those tanks hold about five days' worth of water in the winter. We could shut the system down for five days and you wouldn't even know it. Because we use very little water in the winter. So we make sure any changes to the system, anytime we do any changes, we do it in the winter. So it's got minimum damage in case we screw something up. Right? In case you bust the main and we gotta shut the main off and order new parts. So we, we have a lot of negative numbers right through the first part of the year. And then the sewer system turns around like crazy in the summer, as we all find out now. Everybody's using water. So it turns around and goes really big in the summer. That's typically what happens. They're the exact opposites. The city gets all its money upfront and spends it out later. Utility fund, we spend first and we make it all up in the summer. They're perfectly backwards. So you'll see, for instance, in June, the sewer system or the water plant went negative. The June of last year. You know why it went negative in June? It's hot. Breaks. This is when we break the lines. It's now getting hot. The ground's moving. This is when the water lines start breaking. The sewer and the water lines are breaking. This is when we're doing repairs. We're doing lifts. Typically happens right now. This is the month for the repairs. We've already had one. Already had one big one. So, you know, this is what happens. That's why that's a negative number. So this is an idea, again, this is government accounting. We don't sell hamburgers. We cannot make people give us money in March, April, May, June, July. We can't. We just spend it down. Easiest way to analogize this is think if you ran a company that sold Christmas trees. What are you gonna do in June? I don't care how good a marketer, you can't sell anything. But you still gotta, huh?
Sell fireworks.
Yeah. You know, but, you know, you still gotta water the trees, you still gotta have people who maintain the trees. Because otherwise it's gonna be dead and you won't have anything to sell. But that's kind of what we are. We get all of our money at the beginning and then we deficit spend for the rest of the year. That's all we do. And that's why reserves are so important for cities, why they focus. That auditor comes in, he's always calculating what our reserves are. And you'll say, we want the reserves to be twenty-five percent or thirty-three percent of your expenses. Because they want you to have in the bank, this. They want you to be able to get to December. Most cities spend money negatively, they have negative outgoes in October, November. So auditors always want the city to have enough in reserve to go at least three months to get you to tax season. That's why they calculate that, that number. For us, it's approaching a hundred percent. Because we're climbing rapidly because we wanna have money for the next round of concrete roads. So that's why we're saving so much. Other cities, if they have money in the bank, they actually stop. Because they don't wanna have too much money. Why do they take people's money if you're not gonna spend it? We're taking and saving a lot of money because we have an ultimate project, which is roads. So this is the numbers. This is how we operate. Okay? So if I gave you the July or the June financials and you looked at it and said, oh my God, the city's running a deficit. We need to do something about it. That's normal. That's absolutely normal. Now again, everything's relative. If it was negative fifty thousand, we got a problem. But it's not gonna be that. But this is just an example. And that's why a lot of cities, they kinda give lip service to the monthlys. They don't sit there and pour through the monthly accounting and go crazy. They look at the fund balance and they kinda flip the pages up and down and that's it. Because what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do in July when I tell you, look, this is, this is what happened, made a bond payment? You know, we say money, don't make the bond payment. I'm a champ not making the bond payment. Right? Scroll it down then, this is just an example here. I thought this would be interesting for everybody. Okay? So this is how much cash we have in the town. This goes back to two thousand and five. So this is how much money the town has. That's about, what is that, that fifty, I can't even read the numbers.
About money?
Yeah.
Eight hundred.
Okay. So this was about a hundred thousand here. This is the total cash. This is all the money we had in the entire city. There's water, sewer, tax, money, everything. So back in two thousand and five, we have a hundred, then it goes down. Why, you notice what it does? It goes up. Why is it going on the up? That's the tax money coming in and what do we do during the year? Spend it down. Get the tax money up, spend it down. This right here is when we were elected. Okay? That's when I came into the office. It was right here. This point right there. As you can see, we made it up, we cut our spending. Here we go, up, down, we started climbing. And we hit eight hundred thousand. We had eight hundred thousand dollars in the bank here in the city. Why did it crater from eight hundred down to here? That's the roads. That's using that money to pay the engineering, pay the inspections, pay all the out-of-pocket for the roads. That's what we did there. That's why we saved all that money. Use it on the road to be borrowing as little as possible. Now, then we start going. Here it goes up, and it's down. This is the normal routine. We went up, we went down. Why is it going down here? Again, we're making that bond payments. But we only put a nickel through. We're using a lot of the city money to make the bond payment because we didn't pass it through. So the idea was, this has gotta climb at some point, or we're gonna have to change that nickel and make it a dime or something. Because we're only getting about forty thousand dollars of our hundred and sixty thousand dollar bond payment with that nickel tax increase. So eventually, if this were to keep going down, down, down to here, we, we have to change the tax rate again. But it's turned around. Now, this is where we are now. We're back on the upswing. We're gonna end up somewhere up here at the end of the year. We're gonna be up here again. And we're on our way up. We're heading back up. We should be at five hundred by the end of this year. I think we'll be six hundred and up. We're gonna keep climbing up, heading back toward a point. But this is the town's history of, of cash. All right. Uh, next slide. I wish everybody could kinda see this. This is the utility fund. This is what our utility fund cash look like. This line here is zero. This line right here, that was the month we took office. Was when I took office. That's a negative number. We didn't have any money in the utility fund. It was negative. We actually were overdrawing. We had zero dollars, we had negative eight hundred dollars in our utility fund. We were overdrawing. That was when we walked in the door. Utility fund, they didn't know, and I'm not bragging on them, they didn't know that they were spending almost fifty dollars a month on a sewer and only charging twenty. That's the manifestation. Is you just go bankrupt. So they were using tax money to try and keep the utility fund running, which is legal, you can do that. But that was the major problem. The town was in such bad shape because the utility fund, which should be making money, was losing money. Now, this is the problem. Now, then we immediately started fixing things. We changed the rate to cover what it cost. We started building reserves. Here, we had to put in a tank. We had to replace the pumps. And here we started climbing. This was us building the utility fund reserves up. And it peaked somewhere up here at around three hundred thousand dollars. What's this big drop-off here? That's, that coincided, huh?
That's when the purpose did, right?
Well, no, this is the roads.
Oh, that's right.
When we put in the concrete roads, what did we do before we put the roads in? We replaced the mains. We went in and said, we're gonna rip up the roads anyway. We're gonna replace all the water mains down Lake Crest. That entire street had a two-inch line. The same line running that, that entire street where Daryl is, is the same-sized water line as I have from my house. Was the entire length of Lake Crest. So coinciding with the roads is we did a lot of utility work. Because we could dig wherever we needed to dig. All the driveways got ripped up and we went wild. That's what that was. Then we rebuilt the reserves. Exactly like we're supposed to do. Then we had this big dip here. This right here was us basically giving up on land plan. Giving up on developers and saying, we're not waiting anymore. We're gonna get that ground storage tank. We're gonna put in our ground storage, we're gonna put in the pumps, we're gonna expand the water system ourselves. We're not waiting anymore. And that was that big expansion. That's that extra tank. That's all pumps. That's why we're good for eight hundred houses. We'll get reimbursed this when the developers come in. But in the meantime, we got ahead of the development and we put it in. Now we're here. We gotta build this backup. We gotta build a backup. So I'm gonna be bringing to council the latest rates, the latest studies of where we're at. We haven't adjusted the rates in about four years, I think. So I'm gonna bring that to council, let you see where we're at. But this is the trajectory of how we spend money in the utility fund. Money goes up, we spend it down, money goes up. That's the natural cycle. Okay? So that's, that's kinda the idea about how kind of the dynamic works, how things go up and down, up and down. Again, it's not like a corporation. Corporations don't do that. Corporations aren't organized. They don't try and save the money to spend it, they just grab more. But that's the history. So, you know, also you can kinda see where we're at. Thanks Carl. Look, if you don't set the rates right, this is what you get. You, you go, you go a big trouble. Next up then, um, what I wanna do is I want to, um, this'll actually probably hopefully be very quick. All right, so if you'll scroll up Clint, to the agenda, I'm sorry, to the budget. Okay? If you went back to that original form that I put up that showed all the categories, this right here is the exact same group. This is what the auditor is gonna put in the audit report. This is our budget. This is the grouped-up numbers using his grouping schedules on the budget. Okay? So these are the two thousand seventeen budget and actual. This is the audit numbers. Two thousand eighteen, this is what our budget we adopted was. Again, in all the categories. That's the year-to-date where we are, June 1st. You can see how we're doing relative to budget. And then for the two thousand nineteen budget, I sat down with Larry King. So Larry is a CPA, board member, extraordinary. He is a phenomenal guy. He probably knows more than, than, I know he knows more than I do about GASP and, and, he's served on boards, he's, he's a great guy. I sat down with a blank budget and Larry and I came over the numbers. So we just sat and looked at it and we said, what do you think the number is? And Larry and I just went through it and we talked about all the budget line items and those are the numbers. Okay? So this is, this is the general fund, if you scroll down Clint. Here's the utility fund. So you see the two thousand nineteen budget numbers. Now if you just keep scrolling down, then you have kinda the inputs. So here are each of the categories that feed into the first page, which are the categories. The auditor determines the categories, not me. So I have the grouping schedule that he gives us each year and says, here's how I am aligning your budget. This is what he does. So here are the individual numbers that make up the bigger numbers. So again, the audit is those rolled-up numbers. It's administration. It's not postage. It's not toner. Those all get rolled up into admin. So this is, these are the individual lines. And these are the totals and this is what goes, here's the expenses for all the lines. Now again, why am I tracking all these lines? It's not because I care how much the budget for fences or plumbing programs. Whether it's five hundred or seven fifty, it's not about the budget. We're tracking all those for managerial accounting purposes. But because we only have one accounting system, I don't want to do in two of them. I've gotta use the one for managerial and then roll it up like the auditor does for the financials. Before in the past, I never showed the council the rolled-up numbers. We just looked at the totals. But now it appears we now need to show, which is fine, well, I need to show you the rolled-up numbers. Normally, we just kept tracking the totals and the auditor rolled it. So I'm not gonna go through these. If you have a month, just come back next month. You can look through them, you can see any numbers, see if you have questions, you wanna change numbers. So here are the utility revenues. Because the revenues are seasonal. Right? So like on utilities, you can't just look at, this is eight months in and say, just, you know, divide it in half, because that's eight months out of twelve. Right, add four months for it. Doesn't work like that. A lot of our stuff is seasonal. So what I did is if you look at the water revenue currently as of June 1st, we're two percent lower than one year ago, June 1st. So we're two percent behind. So what you can do in other words, you can say, well, last year we took in a hundred and forty-six. So you can say, well, I'm just gonna go two percent below. Or you can just say, I'm just gonna use the one forty-six. So again, I'm not gonna go there, we picked one fifty because we've got three new houses coming on. Three new houses. Kind of picking it up. Sewer and other stuff were one percent ahead. So again, we're like right on the money relative to last year. Sewer and garage are stationed, we're safe there. Sewer goes up only because we get a couple more houses or a couple houses go vacant, so they don't pay sewer. It's pretty stable. So here's all this. Now Clint, roll down. Then here's the expenses. So here's where we break out, what are the fees we pay for the water versus the sewer? What are the individual fees for stuff? We don't have to do that. The accountant rolls up all those numbers into one number. He budgets the one number. But because I wanna do the rate study, I need to be able to control for how much that costrum bill is water and how much is sewer. I need to separate everything. Double the amount of categories. The auditor does not care. The auditor just sums it up. Because that's what he looks at for the budget. Okay? So here are the individual lines. Now, a couple of things that I will focus your attention on, which we're gonna discuss next time, is that one of the things that, that we have done, which is relatively new for us, can you scroll down please? Up, other direction. I don't even know which way to say it. Okay? So one of the things that we've started doing is scheduled maintenance. We never used to do that. Because we were worried about keeping the town running. Well, we now have, spent two fire hydrants over here. We have about ten. Well, if you draw through a little on whatever, you see, you gotta turn the fire hydrants on every day. You gotta bleed the lines. You have to do routine maintenance. We've never done that because we just never did it. I think we never had the money to do it and we never bothered to do it. Well, you gotta bleed the fire. They're not on the main line. You gotta bleed them. You gotta exercise the valves. We jet clean one-third of the city each year to keep the sewer lines clean. Make sure we don't have any clog, don't have any back. We have certain maintenance things between need to do. So we're shifting, instead of being reactive and chasing leaks and letting things break, we're actually replacing the filters on the blower mode. We're oiling stuff ahead of time. We're doing preventative maintenance that we never used to do before. And so that's why that's there and it's starting to get, it's growing a little bit because we're starting to do the right thing. We've been growing into it. But just like I said, we have five times the number of fire hydrants now over here. Well, you gotta make sure they operate. You gotta make sure you're exercising things at that feature. So there's routine maintenance that we need to start getting on board with, that we need to start doing. It's not sexy. It isn't gonna make anybody happy. Nobody's gonna jump up and down and say, yay. You exercise the valves throughout town. But if we have a leak and you gotta isolate a street, you gotta go to turn those valves. So that's something that, that is really kind of an area of attention as we move forward, that, that we're gonna be looking at. Okay? So that's all I really wanna say on that. Just go through them, take a look at the numbers. If you have any questions, Clint will kinda go through them. But I don't see any point in going through a hundred lines, line by line. Just see which one's interesting and then we'll come back. Road maintenance, I think we're done making road repairs. I think we're done. What I wanna do starting forward is what I budgeted for, and this is, um, use the, uh, use the franchise fees that we collect and use the interest, basically, we have about, we should have someone in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand. Probably, uh, next year we have about twenty-five thousand. I would like to use that money to either start doing something boring for the concrete streets or to maybe do some survey work. Clint and I have talked about that with the engineers. Look, I think we're done making patches. We're done with the asphalt. I know that the road in front of the mailboxes isn't good. Look, we've got over a hundred cement trucks that are gonna roll through this town in the next year. I calculated the houses, they're all happening in the shores. Between the driveways and between the foundations, we're talking about at least ten trucks coming. It's hopeless. We can patch it again, we can put some bags there. But going down that hill, and it's already going up that hill, we're stressing that in front of the mailboxes. It just is what it is. And we're gonna have a ton of concrete rolling through the shores. I know five houses that are coming on line. So I don't see any reason to keep trying to patch the roads that we're gonna shred. I think we give it up. You know, the patches in front of my house, the patches on Kerry's doing just fine. Kerry, how are the patches doing in front of your house? You okay?
All except for the mailbox.
Right. So the patches that they did, I think are holding up fine. The unique thing about the mailbox is that's where the concrete trucks are going. Is right there. And that stressing, it always has been a stress point for us, is mailbox. We must've done the down inside of Melody at least five times since I've been here. Leave asphalt in that sucker. Because it just continues, they apply the brakes, going down it, it just, that's a point of stress. So we can-
And we're deciding technically.
We're outside and I, I just wanna highlight that because that's different.
Right. We might, we have the ability to reallocate that. What if one's fun built-
This road maintenance fund is an internal operation. That's kind of a, for lack, it's kinda like a gentleman's agreement. It's, it's no different than you saying, I'm gonna take my overtime check and put him in the cookie jar. We're gonna use that for our vacation money. It's not binding on anybody. It's not legally, uh, uh, an issue. We could spend that on anything. But the reason why I set it up years ago was without some mechanism, if I said to you, Daryl, how much do you wanna spend on road repairs? There's no limit. You can say fifty, a hundred, ninety-two, eighty-three. There's no, there's nothing to hang your power. Whereas if we took money and just shunted it over like your cookie jar, then it's easy. But at the end of the year, this is what we got. Let's just spend what we got and that's it. And then next year we try again. So it was kind of a way to get disciplined to something where there was none. I mean, we spent over a hundred thousand dollars putting asphalt and stone away. It was a hundred thousand dollar street that we did. So, you know-
That was a problem. That was in two thousand and seven?
Probably two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and eight.
So I mean, it just was, so this fund is just an internal kind of mechanism to, to give us something. So we don't overdo it, but we don't have to do it. It's just our own gentleman's agreement. On the, on the debt servicing, this is just showing you that, um, so right now, you know, our debt servicing fund, so for instance, uh, at the very bottom of the screen there, you'll see, we moved, uh, out of the general fund. So if you look at this one, you'll see is that, um, so for this year, two thousand and seventeen, which is the second one up, we moved a hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. That's your tax money that we didn't spend on the city. We moved it over to pay the bonds. That's a hundred twenty-six thousand dollars we moved over. We made the bond payments. We made the first one, which was a hundred and sixty-five, we did that one. We got our second payment due in August, which is about ten thousand. And right now, if you look at our, uh, at our account, we're gonna come up about two thousand dollars short. Which is fine. We just move, we're gonna have to move some additional money out of the general fund to cover that. We're short because we're missing some money. Somebody hasn't paid their taxes. So we're short money. Now, we'll get the money eventually, but if we don't get it by August, we'll just have to move some money from the general fund, we'll have to move it over to cover the bond payment. But this is, this is where we're at. It's not, you know, we have plenty of money. We have about four hundred thousand dollars in the bank. So it's not gonna break us, but we're just, we're short right now on what we need to make the bond payment. So we might have to do some money. Next year, what you're looking at is payments go up each year because we pay more principal each year. That's the way I set it up. We're kind of, more of our debt each year goes higher and higher of the debt. The interest goes down, but the principal goes up.[1738.14] The interest goes down, but the principal goes up. We pay it off faster. Starting next year, we can pay it off early. This year's our last year where we don't get to pay it off. We can now start paying it off more than what we have. We can do that after next year.
By the end of this year, you almost have, almost 600,000 principal paid off?
Uh, that's right. We have paid, yeah, we're down to a million, just over a million.
So are you planning on starting to pay it off early?
That's a really interesting question. So here's, I mean, it's a really interesting question because I've talked to our, our bond people and I've talked to our financial advisors. The question you get into is, it's similar to this. You win, you pay it off, and you pay it down really good, but you're using up your cash. So then you go to borrow money to do the next set of roads. And they go, "Well, the good news is you only owe 400,000, but you don't have any money in the bank." So, I had a friend, a friend one year after we worked for Goldman Sachs. He took all of his bonus his first year and he paid off every student loan he had. Six months later, they laid him off. The good news was he had no debt. The bad news was he had no money. He was sleeping on couches because he had no money. So the bond advisors tell us it's a tricky game. You don't get credit for paying down the debt and having the money. If they're gonna loan us money, they would rather have us have $500,000 in the bank to cover a $150,000 new payment than for us to have... That's, that's the trade-off. So, yes, I want to pay some of it off, but, but that's a balancing game. Because you don't get credit for being cash poor. They want you to be liquid first. And that's kind of where we're built at. But that'll, that'll come down the road when we start really talking about, you know, the roads, we wanna reach that. But, uh, but it's nice to have that built.
Last one.
Couple CapEx projects have come up, um, uh, we need to, uh... And this is gonna get augmented. Today I went to, I went up to Cobblefield and spent most of the morning with Mark Patterson talking about the sewer plant and the water plant and talking about how we're gonna do some things. So right now we have two kinds of things. In the budget, there's nothing in CapEx. There's no number there. Because typically, we just wanna talk about these projects. And then if we decide to do projects, then I get firmer numbers, to, to, to get better numbers. These are ballpark numbers, just to give you an idea. So, one thing that we need to do, we have a fire hydrant which is, um, I don't wanna say it's inoperative, but it is not functioning properly. It's an old one. It's the corner of High Ridge and Valley. It's leaking. That's some of the water going in the street, which is also causing some of the issues we're having there. But that fire hydrant needs to be replaced. You can't rehab a fire hydrant. We need to replace it.
It's from the original hydrant?
It's been around a long time. My guess is it went in in 96 when the shores were... So, you know, that's, again, some of these things are not sexy. They're not yay, I feel good about that. It's just, you gotta do what you gotta do. You can't have it off. You just gotta do it.
So I remember that lift station up there on, uh, Stowe, I guess it was being a problem a while back. Is that fixed already or is that shit that'd be a consideration anymore?
We, we had it. We put in pressure switches rather than the floats. We put in a whole electronics panel. We put in a smart brain that digitally has how much water and sewer in there, I mean, how many sewers in there. A digital brain that handles everything. And we hooked it up about two months ago. And Sam and I talked two days ago how it's operating perfectly and everything's wonderful. And then it failed yesterday. It fried. It's dead. It's fried.
Electronics?
The electronics are fried.